Good evening. Can everyone please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mr. Major?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Sierotino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here, thank you. Tonight, we're pleased to recognize twenty-eight outstanding Parkway teachers who've been selected by their peers as their school's Teacher of the Year. Their dedication to students, community spirit, and personal commitment to excellence has earned them this honor. A special thank you to the Parkway Alumni Association for hosting a reception prior to tonight's meeting for the teachers and their families. I do believe this is the largest group we've had at that reception, at least in the last six years since I've been coming. So, the event has grown and grown, and it's so great to see all of your family and friends coming here to support you teachers. The Alumni Association provides monetary awards and crystal apples for the elementary, middle, and high school Teacher of the Year recipients, which they'll receive at Appreciation Evening. Please welcome John Kilper, the President of the Parkway Alumni Association.
Thank you very much. The Parkway School District has successfully educated and shaped the lives of students and their families for more than fifty years. The teachers being recognized tonight are central to that success. My family moved into the district when I was in fourth grade, and I then graduated from Parkway North in 2001, and I continue to have great respect for all of the teachers who helped educate me along the way. And as President of the Parkway Alumni Association, I can tell you that that same sentiment is shared among a vast majority of our over sixty thousand alumni. The PAA is proud to be a part of this celebration and extends sincere congratulations to all of the honorees from both current and future alumni. Thank you very much.
Next, I'd like to ask Desi Kirchhoff, our Deputy Superintendent, to come forward and introduce our Teachers of the Year.
Very good. I would ask the Board members and Superintendent to join me. Teachers have an incredible responsibility and an awesome task, but such a rewarding one. Tonight is time to celebrate some of their accomplishments. It is an honor to be here to recognize the talent in this room tonight. Teachers, when I call your name, I would ask that you would come forward to shake hand and be acknowledged by the Superintendent and Board of Education, and then stand to the side for a photo. From Barrett's Elementary, Julie Weiss, second grade. From Bel Reeve Elementary, Julie Odie, fourth grade. Carmen Trails, Mindy Helmick, reading specialist. From Claymont Elementary, Robin Bricker, third grade. Craig Elementary, Dana Trokey, kindergarten. Green Trails, Chip Dar, art. It should also be noted that Chip is also the Elementary Teacher of the Years. So, congratulations. From Hannah Woods, Robin Birkenholtz, fourth grade. From Henry Elementary, David Corrin, physical education. From Highcroft Ridge, Sue Tilden, first grade. This gifted education teacher could not be here tonight, but I want to recognize her as well. From Mason Ridge, Abby Webb. From McKelvey, Kathy Harland, art. This second grade teacher from Oak Brook would not able to attend this evening, but I'd like to recognize Kathy Hartke. From Piermont Elementary, Megan Clemmison, fifth grade. From River Bend Elementary, Liz Schembauer, third grade. From Ross Elementary, Lisa Boxley, kindergarten. From Shenandoah Valley, Pat Welch, Special School District. From Sorrento Springs, Catherine Sherman, also Special School District. And concluding our Elementary School Teachers of the Year, from Ran Hollow, Cara Lackey, Instructional Coach. Now on to our Middle School Teachers of the Year. From right here at Central Middle, Brian Brits, Social Studies. Our Middle School Teacher from Northeast Middle, Greg Herndon, was not able to attend tonight, but I want to honor Greg Herndon as well. From South Middle, Karen Weinberg, from Special School District. From Southwest Middle, Linda Cox, Science. And our final Middle School Teacher of the Year, and the overall Middle School Teacher of the Year, and in addition, District Teacher of the Year, representing West Middle, Jason Levano, Social Studies. Jason, congratulations. There we go. How could you not like him, right? Seriously. That's what his classroom looks like, too. They're all. Congratulations again to our Middle School Teachers of the Year. On to our High School Teachers of the Year. From Central High, Winifred Crock, Orchestra. From North High, Mike Hazelton, Speech and Debate. Mike. From South High, Chris Becker, Band. From West High, Amy Gossett, Theater. Think we've got the fine arts covered tonight. And finally, our final High School Teacher of the Year, and also the overall High School Teacher of the Year, from Fern Ridge, Shelley Farinella, in Guidance. Congratulations, Shelley. Recognizing the talent in this room and recognizing the talent across the district, it really is truly an incredible honor for all the Teachers of the Year to be honored here tonight. It's very prestigious and well-deserved. The quality of people and their talents are unbelievable. So, I want to say congratulations once again to all the Teachers of the Year. So, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our teachers. Also thanks to members of the Teacher of the Year Committee, cheered by Russ Barton from North High. Although I know they enjoy reading the nominations, it is not an easy task to narrow it down to the elementary, middle, high school, and district Teacher of the Year. Thank you to our teachers and their families, colleagues, and administrators for joining us on this special occasion. We are honored to have you with us tonight. We would like you all to stay till the bitter end. Now I'm joking.
It got really quiet.
As much as we love having you all here, we're going to take a short break and let you all get on to your other evening duties. So, thank you all so much for coming, and we'll see you again soon. Have all those wishing to escape, escaped?
You're on tonight.
I'm on tonight, okay. Let's see, we're going to go to four point zero. Additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda, we have two. We're going to add to ten point zero two personnel items, and we're going to call for special meetings on March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, thirty-first, and April twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen.
And there's one more. And I'm sorry, my computer's not pulled up, but it's the, I don't know what item it is. I'm sorry, does someone have the?
Oh, that we're going to, that we're going to pull?
Yeah, we're going to pull, we're going to pull that for this meeting and probably take it up next meeting. Ten point two five, thank you. I had some questions that I'd like to get answered before we approve it, so.
Okay. Now it's time for citizen statements, and we have two this evening. We'll call your name. We'd like you to please limit your statements to three minutes, and you will receive a reply from the Board in writing. Jim Wallet. State your name and address for the record, please.
L.A.I.T.I.S. Address is twelve eighty-eight Cottage Mill in Manchester, six three oh two one. I appreciate you allowing me the opportunity to speak to you today. I stand before you wanting to help you understand what I am concerned about, the students of Parkway School District. In the newsletter that I received last month, it talked about the Spirit of Excellence Award. And it, something about that really concerned me and really hit a nerve for me. In this day and age, I would hope that you would never think about having separate buildings, or classrooms, or water fountains for African-American students. They shouldn't be asked to ride a separate bus. And it was very confusing to me that we would have an award program within our district that is based on the color of student skin. I'm asking you to consider the validity of the Spirit of Excellence Award tonight. This is an award that actually clearly states to African-American students that they're not capable of competing in the classroom with students of other backgrounds. Now, I understand that the awards were designed to build self-esteem, to bridge the gap, the achievement gap between them and other students of other backgrounds, but two wrongs do not make a right. Programs with openly racist focus do not balance out society's past, present, or future injustices. And before you And before you even think of suggesting that it's not a racist program, I'd ask you to go to your website, look at the explanation of the Spirit of Excellence Awards, and where it says African-American, replace it with the word white, or any other ethnicity, and see if you still believe that it's not a racist award. I moved my family to the Parkway boundaries that I could get more cultural diversity in their lives, for my children. I didn't realize at the time that I brought them to a district that doesn't consider all students intellectual equals. If there were an organization that celebrates diversity, celebrates all cultures, teaches our students that what makes different people special, who is who they are, that would be a fantastic thing, something I'd be proud of. Spirit of Excellence Award, however, is something I think we should actually be ashamed of. And last thing I will leave you with on that is, if you're still of a different mind, and you think, no, this is not a racist award, it doesn't say bad things about our district, this program that we had earlier today with 28 teachers, I'd recommend, if Spirit of Excellence is not a racist award, next year, make the Teachers of the Year all the same color, and let's see if things work out the same. So, just a recommendation I have for consideration for the future. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Next, I'd like to call on Becky Porter.
Hi, my name is Becky Porter. I live at 202 Cleticourt in Baldwin, 63021. I have a 4th grader at Sorrento and a 6th grader at Southwest, and it's primarily at the moment on behalf of my 6th grader that I'm here tonight. I would like to ask you to review and reverse a current Parkway School District policy that refuses to award high school graduation credits for high school level math courses taken at the middle school. Currently, there are 7th and 8th grade students taking Algebra I and Honors Geometry courses in the middle schools, who will never receive high school credit towards their graduations, even though those are high school level courses. However, if a current middle school student can be transported to the high school to take these same courses, they will be awarded credit towards their high school graduation. This school year, there are full classes of 7th and 8th grade Algebra I students, and for the next two years after this one, there will be full Honors Geometry classes at the middle schools. I am not sure about the exact number of students at any middle school, but there will be certainly more than a few handfuls of students taking those high school level math courses without ever receiving credit over the next several years. This is unfair, as students who successfully complete Algebra I and Honors Geometry at the middle school will begin their high school math credits with Algebra II, most likely Honors Algebra II with trig, at the high school, and then need two credits thereafter in order to graduate. Sorry, last thing, please. A neighboring school district currently awards credit for high school level math classes taken at the middle school level, once a student has successfully completed his or her first high school level course on a 9th grade, on a high school campus as a 9th grader. That district originally awarded high school credit for all high school level math courses, no matter where they were taken, until they revised that policy several years ago. I know a little bit about the history of that, because I taught some of those very first 7th grade algebra and 8th grade geometry classes. That's Rockwood School District, in case you're wondering. It only seems fair to me to award high school level credit where credit is earned. Please amend this policy so that all Parkway students who take high school level math courses will be treated equally, and receive identical credit for taking identical courses, regardless of where those courses are taken. Thank you for hearing me tonight.
You'll both receive replies in writing. Now, we are going to go to 6.0, call for executive session, there is none. Approval of agenda for March 12th, 2014. We have a motion and a second to approve tonight's agenda of the regular meeting of the Board of Education.
Still moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, 7-0. 8.0 resolutions, there are none tonight. Communications, 9.01. Introductions of new administrators. Principal of Pyramid Elementary School and Athletic Director, calling Desi Kirshoffer.
Good evening, once again, President Feldman, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent, Dr. Marty. First, I'd like to bring up Joe Hawkinson. Joe, could you come down here with me? When we started conducting the search for Pyramid Principal, part of our search process is to go to the school and find out what the school's looking for, start to put together a profile. And when we went to Pyramid Elementary, we asked them, and we received bits of information. One, they said they wanted a candidate who values relationships, who really cares and listens to all the students, the teachers, and the parents. Who cares and is dedicated, will honor traditions and respect the culture, while still moving the school forward. But most of all, they wanted someone who has passion for their position and loves kids. And I think we bring you a candidate tonight that holds those attributes. So, as many of you know, that Joe began his teaching career as a health and PE teacher in Parkway's Rossa Elementary School, and for the past six years, he's served as an administrative intern over at Highcroft Elementary School. But I'm pleased tonight to bring you the new leader of Pyramid Elementary, Joe Hawkinson. Joe?
Thank you. Good evening, Board members, good evening, Dr. Marty. My name is Joe Hawkinson, and I'm thrilled to be only the 5th Principal of Pyramid Elementary School. I did start in the district in 1990, actually as a TA, and I've had the opportunity to work my way kinda up the, up the chain, and I'm just thrilled to have this opportunity to, to work at a great school, and I appreciate you giving me that opportunity. I actually had a really good joke to tell about two elderly golfers and a talking frog. But, but my first mandate from the board was to make this brief tonight, so I'll, Chris, I'll share that joke with you a little bit later, but thank you very much, I'm really looking forward to the opportunity. Thank you so much.
Next, I'd like to ask Mike Roth to come forward. Mike Roth is also, just like Joe, started his career, and I think, I understand they went through new teacher orientation together in 1992, so been with Parkway ever since. And Mike's had a variety of experiences, including teaching at both West, Central Middle, Central High, and also coaching at both, in different positions at both schools. Most recently, he has served as the Athletic Director at Central High. Some characteristics that are gonna make Mike an awesome activities and Athletic Director for the district. He's hardworking, he's dedicated, brings enthusiasm, positive attitude, and unbelievable energy to his work. He's builds, his focus is on building character and leadership in our student athletes, and that will continue as he leads our district. And Mike knows he's got big shoes to fill. There's only been, what, three other district athletic directors in Parkway's history, and both, or all of those, very legendary, and not just in the St. Louis area, but across the state, and we expect the same thing out of Mike Roth, our new activities and athletic director for the district. Mike?
Congratulations. Mr. Kirshoffer. Dr. Marty, Board, it is my honor and privilege, I am so excited to accept this responsibility in, in the Parkway School District. Mr. Kirshoffer said there's, you know, there's only been three district athletic directors, and I have big shoes to fill with Mike gone. I owe him a debt of gratitude for everything he's provided me in the last couple of years. And, and I just wanna say a special thanks to the people that have helped me throughout the years, there's been so many wonderful people in the last 22 years that have done great things for me, for my family, and the district, and I'm looking forward to many more years in Parkway School District. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
I do think it's especially exciting when, when we know that we've been part, they've been part of the Parkway community and culture for a long time, and have contributed, and will continue to contribute. So, I wanna congratulate both gentlemen tonight. And then, I also wanna give the Board of Education Superintendent an update. We do have a victory for our girls' basketball team out of North High. They won by 10 this evening, and will advance to this weekend's round, and hopefully then to the final four. So, congratulations to North High.
Thank you, Desi. 9.02, update on Board of Education candidate filing. At the end of filing, five people have filed for three open positions on the Board of Education. In order of filing, there are Dee Mogerman, Debbie Hopper, Chris Jacob, Wade Weiser, and Tim Sauer. Filing closed on Tuesday, January 21st, at 5:00 PM at the Administration Building. The election will be held on Tuesday, April 8th, 2014. And on March 27th, from 7:00 to 9:00 PM at South Middle School, the League of Women Voters will hold their annual candidate forum, which is a great opportunity for all of you to hear comments from our board candidates.
And Chris Jacob mentioned to me, we got a letter today from the League of Women Voters, and the other candidates, I don't know if you saw your letter, but they had the wrong date of forum in the letter, so don't go on March 17th, like it says, 'cause I don't think anyone's gonna show up. Yes?
Thank you, thank you for that clarification. Okay, so that is it on, on Board filing. 9.03, calendar of meetings. The annual Board of Education organizational meeting is scheduled at 6:30 PM on Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014, at Central Middle School. The next regular meeting of the Board of Education is scheduled for Wednesday, April 23rd, 2014, at Central Middle School at 7:00 PM. And just one more note, I'd like to mention that this is the last public board meeting we're gonna have, is a group that looks like this, because Mr. Major has decided not to seek reelection, so we will, we will shout your accolades at our, at your, at your very last meeting, you'll have to wait for about a month and a half to hear what we have to say about you. But I did wanna mention that if anybody wants to take a picture of us, because this is us, I'm kidding, I'm kidding, Kathy, just kidding.
You really are on tonight.
Anyway, okay, so...
Where did you pick up that sense of humor?
It must be spreading.
All right, so now we're gonna go on to Board Liaison Reports. Does anybody have anything they'd like to talk about? Yes, Chris?
We'll let Mr. Major go first.
Just a quick update on the Special School District Public Review Committee. Meetings continue apace, weekly, to the tune of about three hours a whack. But we have gone forward with some survey work from Dr. Terry Jones, I think some of the pros in the building here are familiar with him. And one of the aspects which I'm pleased to announce, Parkway has volunteered right away to participate in some email surveys of Gen Ed teachers regarding how's SSD doing. I think that's an important perspective, which has, and data that has not been universally available. So, I think at this point, we've got, I think the last count was 13 of 22 districts in the county had agreed to participate in that. Some districts are reluctant to share staff emails and that sort of thing, so that, that effort continues apace, but I'm glad that Parkway was in the first wave of volunteering
Couple of things that I just wanted to share with you and the Board. Had a wonderful trip a few days ago, when we got on a bus at 6 o'clock in the morning, and it was cold, and we went up to Kansas City, to Blue Springs there, to see Caps.
Blue Valley.
Blue Valley. It was a long trip, and very cold. But it was very enjoyable to spend that much time with many of our leaders in Parkway, and then to spend several hours there with those people, and see how the students are self-directed, and working on many important things, that, there was one, a couple of young ladies, one was working, they had internships at like Kansas City Medical Center. One gal, she was working in ophthalmology type things, and pretty sophisticated, and she kinda got involved in that because her mother had had several operations on her eyes, and here was a great opportunity to her to find out, and she was doing some very important work for them. Another one was into cancer studies, and it was just on and on and on, in the different fields that they had, so, not that we have to have a building like that, or, but I know that we're, we're looking at providing that kind of educational opportunity for our kids here, so, and it's amazing what young people can do when given the opportunity, and these kids were showing that. Great ride, learned that several of our people have good senses of humors, too, and I tried not to embarrass them at all. In addition, I just wanna congratulate both Mike and Joe on their new positions. I was very happy playing high school football, and especially when we won seven games. Unfortunately, it took us three years to do that. And Joe, you've got a joke about a talking frog, I've got one about a little mouse that plays the piano, so should be a lot of fun. In addition, Saturday, attended the Legislative Breakfast that was put on by Education Plus, a lot of educators there, superintendents, board members, and many legislators, too, including Governor Nixon, who gave, in fact, we had an opportunity to spend, a few of us, Beth, myself, and Dr. Marty, with Governor Nixon, about 20, maybe even 30 minutes before the regular session, to learn his views, and what he's pushing, and what he hopes to accomplish with education and funding, and a few other things. And really, it was kinda nice, he was, he wasn't, he was more natural, and I thought one of the more engaging times that I've spent with him. And the last thing I just wanna mention, last night, I attended the All District Strings Concert. Found out that Dr. Watson made her way through college playing the viola. And we wouldn't let her out there last night, afraid she might poke some kid in the eye. It was, it was really one of the highlights of my being, I'm sorry. She wouldn't, it was a tremendous opportunity for you to hear how good our kids are, and I'm sorry I'm taking so much time, but they were just wonderful, the 400 elementary kids, and they played together. The middle school was just a marvelous step up, and then when you got to the high school, I told them I'm an avid Cardinals fan, but I'm a Parkway, avid Parkway fan, and fan of the arts. And there was one particular piece there that was played that touched me, in fact, it brought tears to my eyes. It was the ed conductor from Parkway West, and what a moving piece that wasn't to hear these 100 high school kids. They could play at any venue in the world, and we'd be proud of them. It was just that, that marvelous, and I think the 700 parents there were just thrilled to hear what their kids could accomplish, really just marvelous.
Thank you.
I also attended the bus trip to Caps with, with Chris, and it was a great day. It's an amazing program, and I hope if you, if you aren't aware of it, you can, you can Google it and look it up, they're doing amazing things with high school kids. The one, the thing that sticks out in my mind, they have these 3D printers that I've read about, I've not seen them, but the, these kids in this biomedical engineering, I don't know what it is, but they are, the kid I, the child I talked to is, he's a junior, and he's studying anthrax, and he's making an anthrax, a 3D D anthrax model, and he and his partner are presenting this at a science fair, I don't even know if it's a science, it's a science competition, but it's for college kids, and they're attending as juniors and seniors in high school in San Diego, to present, and what great opportunities for them. They'll be exposed to colleges, they'll be exposed to business people that come there. It's just, when he was telling me what he was doing, I, I just nodded my head and pretended to understand, because it was way up here. But it, it was really a wonderful day, and I'm, I hope we can bring elements of this to Parkway. It's just an exciting thing for, for our students, too.
Amazon has the Replicator 2 3D printer on sale today for only $2,200, so...
Oh, there you go. Well, these things, I don't think that it's the same thing, 'cause these things are huge. I don't know.
It's the home model.
Okay, the home model, okay. Two weeks ago, Beth and I attended, and Chris, the Government Relations Meeting, where we had a good conversation with citizens and legislators and legislative aides, and Dr. Marty was there also. Yesterday, Dr. Marty, Beth, and I attended the Religious Leaders Meeting, and it's always one of my favorite meetings. We meet like three times a year with area religious leaders, and talk about issues, and let them be informed about what's going on with Parkway. It's great conversation. And Reverend Smith turned to me yesterday and said, "I just want you to know, I always love coming to these meetings. I moved here from Indiana." He said, "These meetings could not have happened in Indiana." I don't know exactly what he meant, but he just felt like, it's great, we're bridging, you know, we're, we're communicating with our religious leaders, and, you know, opening that communication door. So, I, I think it's so important... So I think it's so important, and this is a committee we've had probably for 30 years at least, I don't know, but it's just a fabulous thing. Then, two weeks ago, Dr. Marty, Beth, myself, and Kevin Beckner went to Jefferson City for the day, for the Missouri School Boards Association Government Relations Day, where we also heard from the governor. And you might want to, you want to add to that?
We heard from two gentlemen from Kansas City Public Schools, their superintendent and their board chief, and they've done some amazing things to help turn their schools around. It was really inspiring to hear their talk, because their demographic is very similar to Saint Louis, City of Saint Louis Public Schools here. So we really had a better understanding of some of the things that people can do to help turn those schools around.
It was a very interesting day, I thought. And one last thing, last, two weeks ago, Dr. Marty, Joy Torgerson, and I attended Marsha Barrish's class for Career Pathways for the Teaching Profession. And we went last year, and she invited us back this year, and we spent 90 minutes with her class, asking us all kinds of questions about the teaching profession. Love to talk to those kids, they just have such interesting questions, and it was, it's a fun day. So thank you, Marsha, and students, for inviting us back. And I think that's all.
Okay. Go ahead.
I participate in the Governing Council, the Special School District Governing Council, and they have their reelections for their Board of Education. I just wanted to let you guys know that the, that the following three were reelected. Dr. Zella Williams from Sub District 1, which is Hazelwood and Jennings, Dr. Daniel Caneo, am I saying that right, Caneo? Sub District 2, Afton, Bayless, Hancock, Plaza, Melville, and Dr. James Westbury, Sub District 7, Ladue and Rockwood. And then the other thing I got to attend was the Special School District Salutes Ceremony, and we have several people from Parkway that received awards. The Special Ambassador Award went to Mark Goldenberg, who was with Central High, I don't want to miss anybody. Building Block Award went to Kathleen Duhart, am I saying that right? West Middle School, and Laura Hines from Northeast Middle School. And then the Lasting Impressions went to Kathleen Baxter-Mueller, I hope I'm saying that right. So congratulations to all of them, if you see them, congratulate them. Thanks.
Just one further comment. In addition to all the work that Dr. Marty has been engaged in, and some of the board members have been engaged in, with our legislators, nobody will ever be able to say that Parkway went down without a fight, because we are really making a strong point to get to know our legislators, to talk to them, to express our thoughts, our platforms, and anything that we can do in the best interest of each and every one of our students, including kids who don't live within the boundaries of Parkway. The, Dr. Marty's part of a superintendent's group that has put forth a proposal to the legislature about fixing this transfer issue, and I'm really proud to be part of this group, that it's just very clear to me that we're all doing our very best work on behalf of kids, not just the kids who live in Parkway, but all kids. And it's really hard to turn a legislator's point of view in a different direction. It's really, really hard work, but I think it's really valuable work, and I think we have to keep plugging our way at it, no matter how many hours it takes, and it does take quite a bit of time. And then, the other thing I wanted to say was, Chris and Dee talked about our visit to CAPS, and Dr. Marty and I visited earlier, or actually in 2013, and what's come of that is the Experiential Learning Task Force, that I'm privileged to be a part of. We had our second meeting yesterday, and Jeremy Mitchell and Jennifer Stanfield are leading that group of educators and business leaders, talking about what, how we can bring parts of that program, that experiential learning, to our students here in Parkway. We've already started with a couple of classes, and we're trying to go think way beyond what we have now, and how we can reach more students. I think we're reaching about 30 students at this time, and the program we visited in Kansas City has, reaches about 900 students a year, and they're a district that's comparable in size to ours. So we're just going to keep plugging our way at that too, and I appreciate all the leadership from Jennifer and Jeremy on getting this project off the ground, because we've really, really enjoyed learning about it, and trying to figure out how we can do something in Parkway for our kids.
I'm ecstatic to report that the principal of South Tech with Special School District is part of the task force, and that lash up between SSD and Parkway in this effort is...
And he was with us two weeks ago.
Great.
Yeah.
Okay, we don't usually talk this long.
No, we don't.
I just want to mention, I think it's something you might have caught it yesterday, but it was a landmark day yesterday in terms of our fueling station for CNG buses was initiated yesterday, we had a ribbon cutting ceremony, and I'm very, very excited and proud of the work, again, so many people have done. And we now don't have to take our 20 buses to the airport to fill them, but Will Rose is very pleased about that. And we have 10 more buses that'll be here in the next couple of weeks, and on April 3rd, we will have a real dedication of the CNG bus program at the West High School at 10 o'clock. So we hope to see a lot of you from the public, and certainly, it's a wonderful opportunity for Parkway to kind of live its mission in terms of Goal 6, on efficiency and effectiveness, but also, I think, a real opportunity to really show our good faith effort to educate children about the future, and to be good stewards of our environment. The CNG buses are wonderful to ride, and very efficient, will last longer, and they're cleaner, and we're being more green, and the green stripe really symbolizes that. So we're very, very proud of, again, all the work that so many people did, starting with Grants, Denise, and Will, and others who participated in, and then certainly Tom has been an advocate, and all of the board, and all the many people that have really worked hard on behalf of getting this project finally to realization, and the buses are here, and being filled here.
Mention on the issue of the green stripes, or is that resolved?
I think we're trying to resolve that. We hope we don't have to go, yeah, there's a... Well, without getting too detailed, there's some concern about, that that's, there's some rules out there about not having anything but the traditional black stripe, I guess, but the green stripe actually is very important in terms of any rescue, to show that it's a, you know, it's certainly a different bus. So we're working through that, I think Will and Mark Stockwell and others are trying to address that appropriately.
You learn something new every day.
Yes, yes.
Anybody, can you, we can't, I can't see you because of the podium, will you stand up? Wow, you guys are hiding. If you don't mind, just take a second and tell us your name, and what you're studying, and why you're here. I don't mean to be rude, but we're just always curious.
Hi, I'm Abby. I'm in Monica Dickens Career Pathways to the Teaching Profession at Parkway South with, these are five of my classmates, one of them isn't here tonight, but this is one of our requirements for our practicum, to come do, observe a Board of Education meeting, and do a reflection on it, and I think it's a really good opportunity, because we've been learning about the Board of Education in our class, like last semester in our class, in the Career Pathways to the Teaching Profession, before we started the practicum, so it's a good opportunity to come actually see a meeting, so thank you for having us.
Now, we'd love to come and talk to you. Right, Mr. Kertschoff, we'll bring...
I'm Riley Patterson. As she said, I'm also at South in Ms. Dickens Career Pathways of the Teaching Profession. I'm going to brave it, and I want to become a middle school science teacher. I'm glad to have this class at the school, because it really does prepare you, like I never thought that a teacher had to go through so many things to like get there, and especially when you start that huge portfolio for teaching, it's like, you know, in college, you can just say, "Oh hey, I already have that, I don't have to do that now," which is great. But I mean, so yeah, it's a great program. I'm a senior.
Hi, I'm Alexis Zimmerman. I'm a senior at Parkway South, I'm in Ms. Dickens Career Pathways to the Teaching Profession class. I've known I wanted to be a teacher ever since I was, I guess, in kindergarten. My dad was a teacher, and he was the person who influenced me to become a teacher, and since he's not here, I kind of want to carry on the legacy, and try and tell people that what they learn is, you know, going to influence our future, and I think it's really cool that it starts in high school with the future of the education system, as they're learning to teach the, further into the future as well.
Hi, I'm Katie Binger from Parkway South High School also, and in the future, I hope to become a kindergarten teacher.
I'm Jillian Music from Parkway South High School. I'm a senior, and I want to become a kindergarten teacher.
I'm Abby Glidewell, also from Parkway South High School, and I'm a senior, and I want to be an elementary school teacher, and we get the privilege to teach in a classroom. So I was able to teach my first lesson plan this week, and it was actually a substitute who was there, who commented that it was amazing that we have the abilities in the classroom management already, before we've even gone to college. So that's been really cool.
Thank you all for being here. And if anybody is brave enough, I invite you to come on down, because we're going to have a really great report in a few minutes, and you guys probably want to be really close so you can hear it. Or not. Okay, we are going to move on now to our action items. We are going to remove 10.25. As mentioned earlier, may have a motion and a second to approve the recommended motions and the consent items on the March 12th, 2014 board materials.
So move?
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. There are no action items tonight. Policy review, there are three. 12.01. There are four, I can count them. Yes. 12.01, School Board Policy Process. That's the one, is that the one we're talking about? 12, it's just the policy review. 12.02, Policy Review, and 12.03, Tutoring for Pay. And if anybody has any questions, we have an expert we can call down for that. And 12.04, Student Discipline, we have a different expert that we can call down for that, if anybody has any questions?
Well, we should probably pull 12.01 next time, since we're not, because normally we'd go on the consent agenda, but we're not voting on the other, correct? So, so next time? For review, right, yeah, okay, exactly.
Anybody have any questions? Okay, so these policies will be up for review April 23rd. And now, here comes the good part, the reports. Facilities 2020, results of the community survey. I'd like to call in Mark Stockwell, CFO, Paul Tandy, Director of Communications, and Mr. Rod Wright, President of Unicom ARC.
Good evening, President Feldman, members of the board, Dr. Marty, and Ms. Stover. Mr. Stockwell and I are really here just to introduce Dr. Rod Wright, who, as you know, he's a familiar face. His company, Unicom ARC, has actually conducted not only just opinion research for us over the years, in fact, probably what, 25 years or so, Rod? Many, we were one of the first districts, I think, in the Saint Louis area that began utilizing their services. We've also used them for a variety of other engagement work, very successfully. We've learned over the years that Dr. Rod Wright is right, and when he, when they conduct opinion surveys, they're very, very accurate, and as you know, the survey that we asked him to help us with was regarding the Facilities 2020 Long Range Planning Work, specifically around the community's opinions and priorities about our capital improvement needs, repairs and renovations in our buildings. And he also asks a variety of questions, just general questions about the district and how we're doing, to assess the broader community's opinions, because this is, as he'll tell you, a random survey of residents throughout the entire Parkway community, not just necessarily those who have kids in school. So with that, I will turn it over to Dr. Rod Wright.
Thank you, and good evening. I apologize, I've got a little bit of a cold, so if I start hacking away, Paul's going to finish for me. First, I just want to thank you again for the opportunity for working with your district. As Paul mentioned, back when we started doing work for school districts in the 80s, this was literally one of the first districts that we started working for, and in the 90s, we began only doing education work for all practical purposes, and right now, tend to work all over the country, but a lot of that is because of the things that we've learned here over the years, and hopefully what we're learning in other school districts now, we can, can help here also. If I'd known I was going to be the exciting portion of the presentation, I would have told a joke or two, but I didn't come prepared for that. What I'd like to do is kind of walk, kind of quickly through the survey results. There's going to be a lot of reports that will show up on Paul's desk pretty soon that has a cross-tabulation of the date, and a lot of the analysis of it, but we're going to kind of take the first blush at it, and then, let me see if you have any questions. Just in terms of some methodological issues, we did 500 completed interviews, the vast majority of them were completed in February. We drew the sample from the, a brand-new voter registration list from Saint Louis County, and the margin of error for a sample size is sizes plus or minus 4.4% at the 95% confidence interval. I'm a little bit of a statistical geek, and I always like, want, I want to point out to clients that error is, as you'll remember from your statistic class, is in a bell shape. So the chances that the results are a percent off are a whole lot more likely than being plus or minus 4.4% off. That's why people in the marketing world are kind of willing to bet the bank on survey results. First question on the survey, where we kind of take from the Gallup Poll Annual Survey, where people are asked to grade their school districts an A, B, C, D, or fail, much like a student. And what's in front of you are the results for that question, asked about the state of Missouri, and then also about the Parkway School District. You'd see 29.7 graded the schools in Missouri an A or a B, 83% in Parkway, and there's a couple of things I want to say about that. One, it's, it's high, and I should have started off by saying that, and all the times I've done survey work for Parkway, I can't remember coming in and having almost all good news, and this survey is very positive. About the only districts that we ever survey for where that AMB range gets up over 83% is a couple of districts on the north shore of Chicago that are elementary districts, Womant, and Winnetka, and Highland Park Deerfield area, where you've got some very small elementary schools that are very affluent. The other thing that I noticed about this, though, is the difference on the As and Bs. Sometimes when you see districts in the 80s, you'll see more giving Bs than giving As, and you've got nearly half the sample responding A on this. This is kind of like getting test scores that can only go one direction. These are very good numbers, and it's not that they can't improve, but, but you know, there are people out there that are kind of old and grumpy like me, and may never give you an A and a B. So, so I guess what I'm saying is, these numbers can't get much better in a realistic sense. Very early in the survey, before people really knew what the survey was about, we asked about a possible bond proposal. I wanted to put the wording up there so you could see exactly how it was asked. People knew that it would raise their property tax rate by 14 cents. We said, kind of for purposes of the question, that the bond proposal was for about 90 million. And then we asked people if they favored or opposed it. And overall, 61.7% said that they would favor a proposal of that amount, 32.7% said that they would oppose it. Really good benchmark numbers to start an effort like this, if that's kind of the will of the board to move forward at some point in time with a proposal like this. In all but four states in the United States, 61.7% is a landslide on a bond proposal. But there are four states in the United States that require a supermajority, and Missouri is one of them. So I would kind of remind you that it takes 4/7ths vote, 57.14% to pass a proposal. So within sampling error, this doesn't pass. So, so it's close. And I did want to kind of point that out, it's actually, it does pass within sampling error, but it's close, and it's not, you know, in Missouri, it's hard to be comfortable with numbers like this when you get them on a survey. On the other hand, I don't know any district that wouldn't love to have starting place like this. For those people who were opposed or undecided, we ask a pro. Now, I want to emphasize, this question was not asked of everybody. And that is another option, is for a smaller bond proposal, $45 million, that wouldn't raise the tax rate, and in response to that, the... that wouldn't raise the tax rate. And in response to that, again, of the people who were initially undecided or opposed, 55% said that they would support that, 40% opposed. If you kind of do the math, that takes that, that favor in the first question, 61%, up to about 82% in terms of overall support on a proposal like that. But I think that's a little exaggerated in terms of what it is. There are some people that probably caved on this question, you know, that, that may not vote yes on a proposal that was on the ballot. Next series of questions asked about, and there's a couple of slides on this, just kind of a broad brush of the various types of improvements that could be made in a, in a bond proposal. And you will see on all of them, support is at the two-thirds level or higher in terms of how many people would favor that. And let me point out the format of this table because it's similar to a lot of tables that follow. First column is strongly favor, second column is strongly favor and favor, the last column is opposed. What's missing out of here is don't knows, but don't try to add 100 going across the row because the strongly favors are in the total favor, okay? And that middle column is what I'm looking at, total favor, where you see huge, well, very large majorities of people supporting the proposals. On this page, the, the type of improvement that is most popular is, is making accessibility upgrades for students with special needs. You will see that right below that, the safety and security is also very popular. A little later in the survey, they're going to see on, in kinds of job performance ish areas, broken down by category, that's also the area they think you're, you're doing the best in. Safety and security today is kind of like technology was in the eighties. No matter how much you spend on it and no matter how good we think it is, you need to do more. And that's where the country is on safety and security issues, you know, around the country right now on, on education issues. This is the other list of those. One of the really interesting things that we've seen and that, that's trending nationally in our survey work at least, is, used to be in the eighties and the nineties, kind of stuff that didn't have a lot of sex appeal, like just fixing up the doors and windows and the roofs and the HVAC, just taking care of the building, didn't really resonate as kind of a hot button on bond proposal. But that is not the case now. And oftentimes when we do a survey, that ranks number one, just kind of taking care of what we got. And, and that's kind of an interesting trend. I don't know if I have a good explanation for it, but we've been seeing that in survey after survey after survey, where a upgrading outdated electrical plumbing roof and mechanical systems, that doesn't sound like something that's easy to sell, is really something that is popular with communities. And then on the bottom, again, you see another safety issue about fire alarm and, and suppression systems. This is a series I mentioned earlier about the district performance, broken down into categories. Again, the numbers are kind of across-the-board good. I wanted to point out spending tax dollars efficiently by setting appropriate budget priorities, 56%. That's kind of the low water mark on this, but I wanted to point out that in surveys that we do, rarely do a majority of people give a school district a positive grades on, on that kind of question. A little bit later, there's a question where we just simply ask people about how, how efficiently they thought their tax dollars were being spent. And asking the question in a number, in, in a different way, kind of popped the number up a little bit higher. Involving the community, important decisions, normally you see 30s and 40% on that question here. You see 60s, kind of a good number, given that you've been doing some community engagement work. Some more of these, technology, building confidence among citizens, staff members, 67%, a very nice number, communicating with district residents. And then you'll remember, I said that you had the highest job performance in all areas on providing safe and secure buildings, to go back and remind you. But again, that's a very high priority for spending bond dollars if, if a proposal would be passed. Next, I want to cover some statements about the district. These were agreed, disagreed questions. The first one is the one that I mentioned when we talked about the efficiency issue earlier. We get excellent value for the taxes we paid to the Parkway School District, nearly 76 agreed with that. Many of the district's buildings are in need of maintenance, repair and renovation, almost half agreed with that, which is kind of an interesting number because in, in public opinion, there's a, a, kind of a notion that, that people study called attitude differentiation. And what that means is that people sometimes don't differentiate very well. How do you think the United States foreign policy is? I think it's awful. What do you think it is towards Cuba? Awful. What about towards Russia? Awful. What about towards Finland? Awful. What about towards England? Awful. People don't differentiate very well. Here at least, in, in an area of importance, I think, there is some differentiation going on where you're getting seventies and eighties and nineties on job performance in some categories, but then you get this, you know, nearly a majority that, that see that there's some need for maintenance, repair and renovation of buildings. The, there was a couple of questions about property values, the third one on this list, just, those just explode into the nineties. I really wanted to point this out, I'm willing to support building improvement programs, make sure that the quality of education is equal to that of neighboring districts, 84%. Another question about safety and security at 82%. And then at the bottom of this list is a question we got out in a couple of different areas, which is the area of kind of using operating dollars for building, repair and maintenance versus bond dollars. And again, you can see that, that nearly three out of four respondents think that money should come from bond money, not from your operating budget, which is intended to support instruction. Next on the list that I want to talk about in the survey was we asked some questions, getting a little bit more deeply into possible building improvements and did it in a little different manner. And, and in this series of questions, if people thought it was a high priority, a top priority, they rated it a seven on a seven-point scale. They thought it was a low priority, a one, and they could use any number between seven and one. And what's in the table in front of you is top priorities are the sevens, the high priority under the scale, the five, sixes and sevens, and then the low priority on the scale, the ones, twos and threes. What's missing are the fours and the don't knows. If you look at that list, you'll see that the safety and security things, again, tends to resonate. There are some issues that, that, that at least relative to some of the safety and security things, do not. On this slide, it's just the public address system in, in the, in the buildings. And on, and on this slide, it's the athletic facilities that are a little lower, just fixing up the floors and making improvements to the playgrounds and doing the sidewalks and the parking lot areas, kind of that routine maintenance stuff that has to be done. But, but to use that phrase I used a little bit earlier, doesn't in some ways have a lot of sex appeal to it. I was surprised that the improving fine arts instructional areas, including theaters and music rooms, was up at 60% because that's also one of those categories that a lot of districts look more like the sidewalks than it looks like, you know, doing technology or doing the safety and security issues. And here it's up to 60% with only 23% giving it a low priority. But hopefully this data will help in your planning efforts, kind of make the decisions that you have facing you in terms of not only if you're going to go forward with some kind of proposal, but what that proposal might look like. How well-informed are you about the district? Well, over 70% said they were very well or somewhat informed. That's about 20% higher than average for most school districts for which we work. I'm not going to spend a lot of time on this. We asked people for sources of where they're getting information about the district. They're all over the place. Used to be newspaper, radio and television. Today, it's everything. And, and we'll be working with Paul to kind of analyze this. There was a large number of other responses that we captured verbatim that we'll be talking about. You can see that on this slide where there's 30% said other, first blush on that. And again, we have the verbatim responses on that. Towards the end of the survey, we asked some more agreed, disagreed questions about a possible bond proposal. You can see, again, very high numbers in support of a possible proposal. We should pass this proposal to protect our community's investment in quality school buildings. Three out of four agreed with that. Another question about property values where it just explodes to 93%. A really interesting question, 42. There's always a question that surprises me in terms of the results. And on this survey, it's 42. Our school buildings are fine, the way, at, our, sorry, can't say it. Our school buildings are fine as they are. I can't afford to pay more taxes, no matter how good the cost. Only 38% agreed with that. I would have guessed that would have been in the fifties, if not in the sixties, just based on, not survey work here, but other places. There are a lot of people out there that will, one, say I can't afford higher taxes, no matter what, and two, you know, this district's got school buildings that got pretty good curb appeal for people that may have that attitude. So I would have guessed that would have been considerably higher, particularly when there's a little bit of a statistical predisposition to agree with agreed, disagreed questions. A few more of these, again, a question about whether building repairs should come from bond money or from operating dollars, 77% talk about for bond money. 44 is just a simple, I need a lot more information about building improvements that are planned for, I would support the proposal. There's always a question that needs to be rewritten in a survey and that's probably one of them. It's kind of hard for anybody to disagree with that and I'm not sure we learned much from that question. So that's the question I want to rewrite next time. And then you can read the bottom, agreed, disagreed question about the average age of your buildings and the need to make the upgrades. So, so again, across the board, you see very high levels of support for kind of moving forward with some kind of building improvement program. At the end of the survey, we, we kind of came back and asked a question that was question three again, kind of on reconsideration, you know, now that we've answered a lot of questions about this issue, how do you feel about a ballot proposal? Most of the time when you start out at 62%, it either stays the same or it goes down because that's a pretty high starting point. But in response to this question, total support bumped up about 4% to 66%. I guess that's 5%. Opposed, only 32.3%. So again, it, it's hard to, even if you're looking for bad news in this survey, it's kind of hard to find it. You know, I have the unpleasant task, not infrequently going in and giving what are not very good survey results to school districts and they either take it well or want to shoot me. So it's always, always nice to give results like this. Again, I know that the decision about some kind of building improvement program is down the road, but at least right now, the community is, would be, at least in my mind, very supportive of that kind of decision, should that be the pleasure of the Board of Education. So with that, let me see if you have any questions and, yes, sir?
You've done this for a number of years for us and we've always done well when we listen to what you say. When we don't listen, we have problems. We, we know that, right, Paul?
Too flattering.
But we appreciate, appreciate this. And in all the years you've been doing surveys for us, have you ever seen such high results?
Have I ever seen what?
Such favorable results?
Not that I can recall. I'm going to go back and look at some Time Series data. I think Paul has already had a chance to do some of that. We're going to be doing that in the report. But, but no, I mean, there's always that kind of, you know, kind of the flip side of the coin on some of the questions and, and, and I don't remember one being kind of this universally good, especially when you tell people their tax rate's going to go up. You know, this has been a community that's been, my memory is, pretty supportive of no tax increase referendums.
Right.
But you put that tax increase piece to it, it, it's tough, as it is most places.
Right.
So that's what I see as a real difference here.
Well, the last time we had an operational tax increase, it took 35, 36 years of trying to get it. So, good results. And, and Ward, I think we should all be very pleased and all the administrators here. I mean, I, I just feel like it's a kind of a stamp of approval. So I think we all should pat ourselves on the back a little bit and take the good news like it should be taken.
And that'll probably last about two.
I know, till the, till the next crisis, but let's have a feel-good moment.
And I don't want to exaggerate this, but they think you're doing a good job. They think you're listening to them. They, they value, you know, the kinds of things that need to be done to the buildings and so, you know, the right mix is there. You know, a, a lot of times people may think that stuff needs to be done, but they don't think they've been listened to or they've not been asked or they've not been communicated very well. So kind of all the puzzle pieces kind of seem to be right on this.
Thanks.
I'm curious, Rod, if, if our citizenry really understands the difference between operational funds and bond. We keep that religiously very separate and if we don't have bond money, then there's not much we can do. We just don't have enough money in the operational side except for extreme emergencies if, if we really had to use that money. And that would mean we'd probably have to cut something in the instruction area. Do you think our citizen really understands or is that attitude differentiation?
That's a good question. I guess my answer to that is nobody seemed to, not very many people struggled with the question in terms of don't knows. When, if they don't understand a question, you'll see the don't knows pop up quite a bit and we didn't see that. You know, I think here in Missouri, people are getting pretty well schooled on that. You know, and I'm thinking about where I live in Webster Bros. and, and here. I, you know, I think by and large, the average voter kind of knows the difference and knows some of those issues involved. And so I certainly didn't see anything in the results to the questionnaire that would indicate people were confused about that.
Good.
Just had a question on, you mentioned the people talking about their primary sources of information for the district.
Right.
And the largest category is other.
Right.
Was a lot, did, did you look at the detail of that? Is a lot of that sundry internet?
We, we will be. I mean, what we haven't, we haven't had a chance to dig into it as much as we need to, we will for the final report, is, is kind of the verbatim responses that we got from that. The way that question was asked was open-ended and then the interviewers had the more popular responses on the screen. If they got something else, they keyed it in verbatim and so we have that data. But, but it's going to be all over the place. And that's the challenging thing about communications now is, is trying to figure out what kinds of demographic groups are getting information from what sources. I mean, I, Paul probably heard me talk about my, my 37-year-old daughter endlessly, but every time I go to her house, you couldn't get another stick of mail or piece of mail in her mailbox. And me being a good dad, I always say, don't you ever look at your mail? You know, there's important stuff there. And she says, no, there's not. And I'll go through the whole list of what I think is important mail and it's all stuff she's dealing with electronically. So it's challenging knowing, and, and what a lot of people in communications do think they can go to electronic because people aren't looking at their mail, but there's a lot of people that are still reading the newspaper and getting mail and getting information from paper. So it's difficult. So you end up having to do everything and figuring out the mix and it gets more challenging all the time.
And then you also mentioned the, the fine arts question and, and I don't think that surprises any of us. I think Dr. Marty said the arts are in our DNA in, in Parkway and I certainly, Chris said that. Okay. But I guess that my question is historically, have we asked that question before and do you recall if that has changed over time in Parkway?
Okay. Specific money set aside for fine arts, I think.
Okay, yeah, just random question.
I could tell you, I've spent a lot of time in my career trying to figure out things to call a theater that's not the word theater. I don't know if you've seen Rittenor School District's theater, which is just stunningly beautiful. But on the list of facility improvements for their bond election, they had a list of 14 things and at the bottom of it, it said auditorium. Because support was so low for, for that. And so, you know, and, you know, we toyed around with, you know, a, an education center for the performing arts, which nobody liked. I mean, so, but it's nice that you're not going to have to worry about that too much if you're looking at improvements in that area.
How many of the households interviewed were parent and non-parent?
We, we do. It was about, about, if my memory was, 19% were parents, 80% not.
Not, great.
Yeah, the sample was skewing a little older. We're going to look at that with district demographics, but, but the nice thing about it skewing a little older is November turnout in an off-presidential cycle election skews older anyhow. But you'll see nothing in the demographics that make you think that this is anything but a conservative measure of support because of the, the average age of the sample. People have been in their homes forever. A great deal of the sample is 50 years of age and older. I think 19% had kids that were 18 and younger. So it, it skewed older. Oh, sure.
I could just also elaborate. So it was about, about 80, 20 parents versus.
So it was about eighty-twenty parents versus, or kids under the age of eighteen versus not in the household. And then of that, roughly nineteen-twenty percent that did, about a fourth of those indicated they had children in private or prokial schools. So, you know, the vast majority of respondents on the survey really were not directly connected currently to the district. But when you ask follow-up questions about, have you ever had children attend Parkway, I think it's almost two out of three said yes. When you ask, how long have you lived in the district, the biggest chunk is twenty years or more. So these are people who've been here a long time, and they've had connections to Parkway at one time, but as Rod mentioned, the respondents were a little bit older. But hopefully, that's actually possibly a good thing in terms of the overall numbers.
Was it basically random sampling data across the district?
Yeah, we do a random sample off the voter registration list, but we also have built-in some geographical, not so much quotas, but where we're not, where we're making sure that we get the sample appropriately spread out across the district.
Is it just landlines that you call?
I'm sorry.
Is it just landlines that you call?
We only used landlines for this survey. I don't know what anybody has told you about doing cell phone samples, they are obscenely expensive, and particularly for a smaller geographic area like this. We have unnamed competitors who will come in and say they do cell phone samples for free, but what they do is, just in case you ever, of course, I never want you to talk to anybody else, but, but what they do is, early in the questionnaire, the first question is, when it comes to using your telephone, what's your principal, what do you use most often? Your cell phone or your landline? If they say cell phone, they go on the cell phone sample. Well, shoot, it's easy to hit a quota, cell phones that way. What you have to do to kind of build them in right now, because the lists are not very available yet, is do a lot of random digit dialing and hope you're catching people that are in the Parkway School District. Right now, at least, there's not statistically any reason to do that for a survey on something like a Parkway School District survey, where I think our industry is moving, and we're, and actually, we're checking the availability of this right now for Parkway, because the district may be big enough to do this. So our industry is moving, and it's what are called internet panel surveys. We just finished one for St. Louis City, but the geographic area's got to be large enough where the panel has been developed. And what those are, is survey sampling incorporated, and some of the people that sell samples have, are scientifically generating panels of people that will, with an incentive, money, respond to an internet survey. And when they first started doing this ten, fifteen years ago, you know, there was a non-coverage issue with older people. But, you know, picture somebody that was eighty fifteen years ago and what their age is today. Almost the entire population in an area like this is internet-capable, and so that's where the industry is going to be moving. And I'm guessing, within a few years, we'll be doing that here, in terms of doing this kind of survey work, and it is much cheaper. And it's an interesting technology. The problem is, right now, the technology hasn't grown to the point where you can say, I want to do it in Parkway School District. You can do it in St. Louis County, you can do it by zip code, but there's got to be enough, enough in the panel, if that makes sense to you. That was a long-winded answer to your question about cell phones.
Right, yeah.
What's shelf life? We were going to be, of course, having a meeting later this month, and then we'll be bringing the board a proposal, but we're still seven, eight months away from actually going to the voters. So when you have a survey like this, what do you see as the accuracy in terms of a time?
Yeah, and that's a complicated question on our industry. The way to think about public opinion on some very specific questions, think about a tree. And you have your kind of base or core values, and on those base or core values that trunk, you begin to form opinions, and those opinions get very narrow on some very specific issues. You know, a storm can come through and take some of the outer limbs off, but the core values still stay the same, and in a lot of ways, kind of the fundamental support for this district would withstand some minor storms, whatever a minor storm might be. I mean, some kind of minor little thing that would pop up in the news. If something major happens, you know, if there was some major scandal that would hit a district, it's, you know, you'd want to go back and re-measure and see what kind of impact that that might have. And the other thing to keep an eye on, if you're looking at an election that may happen this year, you know, in August or November, and for school districts, we're talking November, is that sometimes these elections can get caught up in national election cycles and the mood that people may have. In nineteen ninety-four, I'm old enough to remember that, that was the Newt Gingrich Contract with America election, you know, a conservative wave hit this country that was felt all the way down to school district elections. So things like that can happen, but are pretty unlikely. And again, you know, the foundation is so strong here right now, you know, I think in that sense, shelf life's going to be a long time.
Well, thank you very much.
I got to do that without coughing one time.
We learned a lot, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's see, fourteen point zero work session, there is none tonight. Now I'm going to call for some special meetings, so here we go. March twenty-fifth, March twenty-sixth, March thirty-first, and April twenty-fourth, may I have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education call for special meetings on Tuesday, March twenty-fifth at four P.M. at I.S.C., for the purpose of holding a Teaching, Learning, and Accountability Board Subcommittee Meeting. On Wednesday, March twenty-sixth at eight-thirty A.M. at I.S.C., for the purpose of holding a Project Parkway Steering Committee Meeting. On Monday, March thirty-first at seven P.M. at North High School, for the purpose of holding a Project Parkway Town Hall Meeting. And on Thursday, April twenty-fourth at seven A.M. at the Administration Building, for the purpose of holding a Finance Human Resources Subcommittee Meeting. So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries seven zero. Call for executive session on April twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen. May I have a motion and a second, that the Board of Education call for an executive session on Wednesday, April twenty-third, two thousand and fourteen, at five-thirty P.M., and/or immediately following the regular meeting at Central Middle School, for the purpose of considering, one, legal actions, causes of action or litigation involving the district, and any confidential or privileged communication between the district or its representatives and its attorneys, six-ten point zero-two-one-point-one. Two, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting of particular employees by the district when personal information about the employees discussed or recorded, six-ten point zero-two-one-point-three. And three, individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings, and records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, six-ten point zero-two-one-point-one-three. So moved. Second. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Major?
Yes.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Yes.
Dr. Sieratino?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes, thank you. Motion carries seven zero. Seventeen point zero recess, eighteen point zero closed meeting, nineteen point zero. May I have a motion and a second to adjourn the regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you all very much for coming, and have a great evening.